I'd like to call this meeting the Cholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present, except for Councilman Clark, he's been excused. We have Vice Mayor on the phone. Invocation tonight will be given by Councilman Adams, and I will lead us in the pledge if you'd like to stand and join us.
Our Father in Heaven, we are very grateful to have the opportunity to meet together tonight to discuss and talk about our beautiful community. We are grateful for the moisture that blessed our community as of recent, and we pray that that will help our lands as our season enters. We're grateful for those staff and that help our city stay so pretty and beautiful, and they do so much work. We're so grateful for them. We pray that Thy Spirit may be here as we discuss these things this night, and we humbly say this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Appreciate that. Thank you, guys. Thank you all for attending tonight. We appreciate it. Those in the audience, we appreciate those watching on Channel 58 or any other means of communication. Next item on the agenda is call to the public. Any citizen desire to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited, three minutes shall be addressed by the City Council as a whole and not to any individual. So tonight we have Steve Heckethorn. He wants to do a presentation for capital credit.
Thank you, Mayor. Generally, when the electric utility shows up at a city council, there's an issue. Tonight, we're here with good news. We have a check we want to give to the city of Cholo. But before we do that, I just want to explain what we as Nav Apache do. We do what all utility companies do. We are in the business of providing safe, affordable electricity. We've literally been in business with Cholo as a partner over since 1980 with a franchise agreement, which goes back all the way to Dennis Davishead. So we're glad to partner with that and then help process that, and that's revenue streaming to City Cholo. Right now, if you look around City of Cholo, you'll see Nav Apache. We have sub crews that are working all over City of Cholo, all the way up to Walmart, out to Torreon and what we're doing. So just to let you know of our investment in Cholo, we've invested over $6 million of Cholo infrastructure in the last five years. So we see where Cholo's going and the growth that Cholo has, and we want to keep up with that. So safe, reliable, affordable electricity, affordable electricity, that's what all electric utilities do. But this is what we do different. So Dennis, if you'd come at this time and present that portion.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Dennis Hughes. I live in Lakeside. I'm the Secretary-Treasurer of the Board of NEC, and I represent District Number One, which is Lakeside and part of South Cholo. I think we passed out a letter here that explains capital credits in the most simple and easiest way possible, and I'll just refer to this. Margins are the difference between operating revenues and expenses, and each year's margins are allocated to our members in proportion to the amount of electricity each member used during that particular year. Your capital credit allocation represents your share of the margins that the cooperative makes as an entire organization. Based on NEC's financial stability today, which is very good, NEC's Board of Directors has approved the retirement of 100% of the capital credit allocated to members for the years 1974 through 1983. The check you get tonight represents your capital credit allocation for those years. The other way to look at it is the word dividend. If we were a profit company such as your current provider, but we're not, we're a nonprofit company, so a capital credit goes back to our members who are local rather than a dividend from a for-profit company that goes to investors all over the world. So that's what we're proud of, and that's what we're here to make that presentation tonight. Can I answer any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Did you want to introduce your board or anything?
Brad Baker.
Here we go. Can't turn a microphone away from you right, Brad.
Hi, I'm Brad Baker. Nice to see you all. Appreciate letting us be here. I'm Chairman of the Board for the last 21 years. There is life after Baker's Office City in Cholo. Yes, that's where. And I miss you all down here, trust me. But anyway, my fun part tonight is, instead of Brad Baker, I get to be Santa Claus. I got the gray, and if I could borrow a little bit of John's beard, then we'd qualify for that. But Dennis has already told you about the two-step process. We have to make margins, and then we have to retire them and allocate them out to you all. So tonight I get to present a check to you all for $2,374.92.
Nice. Thank you.
Best to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
That was pretty quick.
It's easy giving money away.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. That was pretty quick.
It's easy giving money away.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
Good night, chief.
Next item on the agenda, a special event. Chief Shelley.
Stole his glasses.
I didn't steal.
Okay. Still in your glasses.
I'm glad you found those.
There's a GPS inside here, so I brought mine, chief, just in case you forgot yours.
Mayor and City Council tonight, one of our own's getting ready to retire after a long career, so I'm going to read something out of here. Sergeant Robey, he's right behind me, okay? Okay, that's kind of weird. Sergeant Robey, he's served in law enforcement for over 29 years. He began his career in 1991 with the Apewee County Sheriff's Office, where he spent seven years. In February of 1999, Sergeant Robey came to the Cholo Police Department, where he served in a number of roles over the last 22 years. During Sergeant Robey's time with the Cholo Police Department, he's been a patrol officer, a field training officer, crisis negotiator for the SRT team, and also a motor officer. A lot of people know we have motor officers, but we had a couple of them for a little while. And as a sergeant, he's served over patrol squads, the investigations unit, administrator over the photo enforcement. I know that's bad words, but I said it anyway. Program, he's currently serving as the administrative sergeant over front desk personnel animal control and the school resource program. Doesn't sound like a whole lot, but this is what else he does. He's worked as a special events coordinator. He's a below 100, which is a program that, as officers, we try to get our accidents down, sworn officers' accidents down, below 100 every year, and mental health first aid instructor. He's worked as the department's training coordinator, impound hearing officer, and public information officer. But where he stands above all the other assignments he's been assigned to, Sergeant Robey has been an advocate for critical incident stress management and officer peer support program. He's done numerous critical incident debriefings for first responders and agencies all over northern Arizona. His goal has been to help officers stay healthy, deal with the corrosive nature of the job, and reach the finish line of their careers and then beyond. Sergeant Robey is married to Gail, pretty lady right in the back here, and right next to Gail is Sean's mom. And together, they've been inactive, so Sean and Gail have been active in charity events, supporting and giving back to their community. They look forward to enjoying retirement, traveling, and leading productive and healthy lifestyle. Sergeant Robey has worked very hard to this, and it's finally time for him to reap the benefits he sowed. That's Sean Robey.
I might need to clean up. Mayor, City Council, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mooters, City Manager. Thank you for all the things that this... All the opportunities that this city's given me. I wish there were more officers here tonight, only because I want to tell them, like I'm going to tell you, or I want them to hear me tell you, and that is, this is an honorable profession. Never forget that. You need to make sure that you continue to take care of the police officers in this city because they serve this community, and because they do, it makes it a better place. If you start cutting corners, that's where things are going to start to fall apart. But you need to make sure that these people get that support always from you. I've gotten it through my career, but I want to see it continue and get all these other young guys that we now have through as we do that. So please continue to do that. This is an honorable profession, and some people don't get to be here like I am tonight. And honor those people's sacrifice. They pay the ultimate price. I weren't able to be here to do what I'm doing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Sergeant Robey, before you leave, we got a little something here for you. On behalf of the City of Cholo, Sergeant Sean Robey, City of Cholo, 1999 to 2021, thank you for everything you've done for us and keep us safe. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So Sergeant Robey, before you leave, and Chief Shelley, all the years that I've been a criminal investigator, and I know I've interviewed Robey several times when he was in the investigation unit and stuff, you are losing a really good officer. So we're sorry to see you go. I'm a little mad at you, though, because now I got to find a new mental health first aid instructor. But you know what? Enjoy your retirement.
Yeah, be safe.
Mayor, I'd like to say something, too. Officer Robey, when I first came on the council a long time ago, your name was presented out. I had no idea who you were. Just like some of the new police officers, I have no idea who they are. But whenever your name was mentioned, there was respect and honor for the things you did around here. And so I want to let you know, even though we didn't know you personally, there's a lot of kudos behind you that we slapped you on the back for saying thank you. So I just want to offer a great retirement, one time with your wife, and have a great joyful life. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consent calendar. Is there any items that need to be polled or discussed? If not, I'll read items on the consent calendar. Proclamation by the Mayor for cramming March 17, 2021 as National SBDC Day in the City of Cholo. Consideration of approval of a technical assistance contract with NACOG. Consideration of minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting on March 2, 2021. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, raise your hand.
Connie.
Connie, how do you vote?
I'm a voter.
Thank you. Passed. Okay, next item on the agenda is new business. Consideration of Resolution Number R 2021-03, authorizing submitting application for Arizona State Parks and Trails Application Signature and Approval of the Project Agreement for the Construction of Phase Two, easy for me to say, of the Americans with Disabilities Act Trail on Cholo Creek and Meadow. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. For the background, on December 31, 2020, the city submitted a pre-grant application to the Arizona State Parks Non-Motorized Trail Project to construct Phase Two of a new Americans with Disabilities Act pedestrian trail along Cholo Creek that will terminate at Woolford Road. ASP approved the pre-application, allowing access to the final application. Phase Two will begin at the termination point of the recently completed ADA Trail and travel approximately 2,000 linear feet south along the west bank of the creek, ending on the east side of Hampton Inn and Suites. The trail will have an asphalt foundation to ensure high degree of safety for wheelchairs and other mobility devices, and include two bench seating areas. The maximum ASP grant funding available for the non-motorized trail project is $150,000 with a required non-federal match from the City of Cholo. The total estimated cost of the project is $163,357 with a non-federal cash match of $29,405. To complete the application obligations, the city is required to certify by resolution approval of the application, signature authorization, the availability of local matching funds, and authorization to sign the project sponsor agreement. And staffs available for questions.
Anybody have questions?
Just a question on this grant. Did we go out for the grant locally here for that grant? Everything that we've seen on this meadow has been nothing but positive. I've listened to people that just can't believe what we're doing to that meadow. So doing this grant and extending this thing here, I think is probably one of the best things that the city has done for the people in this city. So I am grateful that we're looking at doing something like this for the people. So thank you very much.
Staff has received a lot of positive comments on the pavilion and the trail and other things that have been done there also.
Mayor, if you have any, if you don't have anything else? I got one quick comment real quick. I mean, me and my wife walk this trail quite a bit, and there's a lot of people that use this trail. But when this thing gets across Cholo Creek, it's going to be amazing. So I'm glad to see this. Even today, with the trail that's out there that we've done, you drive by and it's not as noticeable. And one of my questions was, I hope we're bringing the horses back, and we are. So the horses are still going to be out there. So it's nice that, once this part is done, to see those horses back there. But I appreciate, it's going to be really nice out there.
And there's one more thing I want to add before I make a motion is, I want to thank the city staff and employees out there. When we first started looking at this project a while back ago, we were really concerned about the trash and what it would be like and keeping things clean. And so far, I haven't heard any complaints about trash or what's going on down there. So I think we're doing a pretty good job of keeping that cleaned up, and I think that is another great influence of what we have as a staff and people out there working. So I move to adopt a Resolution Number R 2021-03, authorizing submitting to Arizona State Parks and Trails Grant Application, authorizing to sign the project's sponsor agreement certifying the ability of $29,405 in matching funds to construction Phase Two of a 2,000-foot Arizona with Disabilities Act long trail along Cholo Creek at the metal known as the Metal Trail at the Bluffs, and approve associated budget transfer.
Thank you. We've got a motion. Any second?
No second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Vice Mayor?
You in favor?
Thank you. Passed. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Justin.
All righty, next item on the agenda is consideration of acceptance of Task Order B provided by professional services contract with Armstrong Consultants, Inc. for apron rehab project.
Good evening. On July 16, 2019, City Council ordered a professional service contract to Armstrong Consultants for engineering services at the Cholo Regional Airport. Engineering and construction administration services for several projects, including rehabilitation of the South Apron, are included in the services provided by Armstrong Consultants. Then on January 15, 2021, the FAA requested the city submit a recommendation to award Armstrong Consultants a contract for the constructions administration services for the South Apron Rehabilitation Project. And on March 2, 2021, the City Council approved that recommendation. These engineering services are supported by the FAA at 95% or $196,802 of the total project cost, and ADOT and the city will each pay 2.5% or $5,179 of the project cost. Staff recommends the City Council approve Task Order B with Armstrong Consultants in amount not to exceed $207,160, with the city's cost share not to exceed $5,179 for the South Apron Rehabilitation Project at the Cholo Regional Airport.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve Task Order B as part of the professional services contract with Armstrong Consultants Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $207,27,160, with the city's cost share not to exceed $5,179 for the South Apron Rehabilitation Project at Cholo Regional Airport.
Thank you, sir. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Vice Mayor?
You in favor?
Thank you. Motion passes. Oh, go ahead.
Let me just say why Tom's up there. This is his last meeting with us, as he's decided he wants to move to California. So we just want to thank Tom for all he's done for our regional airport out there. He's been a great manager for us, and just wanted to thank him.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, and I read this, and I was hoping I was going to be here tonight so I can at least tell you, the short, really, the short time you've been here, Cholo Airport hasn't lost a step. So I want to thank you for all your time and everything you've done for the city of Cholo. Because if it wasn't for your hard-working ethics and doing what you need to do, we would be in the back door again. So thank you very much, and then enjoy your life in California.
I hope to. Thank you.
Come around and shake our hands. We'd like to congratulate you for a good job and well done. No fist bump, a little handshake. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Sometimes that helps.
Good luck to you. California.
Thank you very much. That's backwards. Tom, are you going to drive to California backwards? Because it seems like they're coming here, so they forgot, or fly.
I'm hearing a lot of that.
All righty, next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance Number 2021-02, authorizing purchase of real property known as AP Number 2010-41-001B for Cygnus, yeah, Home Services LLC, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Hang on, one second.
The ordinance is 210-14-001B.
Mine says 41.
Mine says 41.
14 here. All right.
Which one do we want to use?
It's 41.
41.
Okay.
I should start reading that. That's ginormous. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So recently, city staff noticed that the building and property located at 1301 East Thornton in the City of Cholo was for sale. This property consists of about 1.19 acres, and the building is approximately 4,200 square feet. The listed price was $395,000. This building is located next to our public works yard in the industrial park. Staff felt that this building and lot would be advantageous to the city for possible future police evidence and permanent city storage. Staff approached the seller's agent and negotiated an offer to purchase the price up to $360,000. Staff has visited the property. The building appears to be in good condition. There's a large freezer in the building that will need to be removed. There is ample properties add-on to the building if needed. This agreement allows the city a 30-day inspection period. The close of escrow would be on or about April 8, 2021, with party splitting the escrow fees and the seller paying for title insurance. Staff recommends approving ordinance Number 2021-02 and purchasing the property for police evidence and permanent storage for the city. We have noticed that the name at the top is Cygnus Home Service LLC. It was formerly Schwann's, but they changed the name, so that's why it might be a little something that I'm not used to, but that is the owner of the property.
Have any, got any questions or comments?
I do. So on the freezer being removed, so are we going to have to pay someone to remove it, or are they going to sell it and have that person come in and take it?
We'd probably see if somebody wants to either pay us for it or come in and take it out. We'd probably just put it up in an auction, that kind of way. It's a large freezer. It's big, but we'll see. If somebody could come in and take it out, maybe that'd be the...
Anybody else got any comments? I could have the clerk read the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Cholo Ordinance Number 2021-02, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Cholo, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of real property known as AP Number 210-41-001B from Cygnus Home Service LLC.
Thank you. Any more comments? I'll look for a motion.
I'll make it. I move to adopt ordinance Number 2021-02, and further move to approve the purchase agreement with Cygnus Home Service LLC and authorize the mayor to sign all documents necessary for the purchase of the property.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Vice Mayor?
You in favor?
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Brown. I could tell you, that's a good purchase for the city. And I know the city attorney didn't say, but that price may be coming down a little bit, too. So it's nice to see us buy that. It's going to help everybody out, PDs. It's going to be nice. Okay, next item on the agenda is summary of current events. Do council members have anything they'd like to bring up? Council also?
Thank you. I have been kind of laid down here for the last couple of weeks, and so I've been able to attend the Meals on Wheels meetings, but it's only been by phone. So they're doing good. They're still serving people. I want to continue serving people. So if you'd like to help on Meals on Wheels, please give them a call, and they'll definitely use you to the best of their abilities. Second thing is, I want to thank staff and public service for everything they've done so far this winter for getting rid of the snow and moving things around and make sure the public has got safe sidewalks and ability to get to where they're going to and coming from. Last is, I want to thank everybody for their prayers. Had knee surgery 13 days ago, total knee replacement, and doing good, just slow. So thank you for all your prayers, and I'll continue to try to be here to give ahead at a hard time. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I want to report on is, once again, we're still moving forward on our Cholo BBQ Throwdown the first weekend in May. So we've got a couple other events that we're working on. Just like to remind everybody, we know what the governor's orders are as of today, but we're still going to move forward. Hopefully, we get a few things lifted. But if you're planning an event, continue planning an event. You don't have to have the mitigation plan turned in immediately a couple of weeks prior to your event, yes. But hopefully, within the next week or two or three, we get things opened up a little more here. But we need to start moving forward on our events, so we're doing that. We had a long meeting today on a couple of events that we're going to kick off. So, City Manager?
Just a couple of things. The Recreation Department's continuing to make their plans for the Easter event, which is a drive-by event this year that is scheduled for Saturday, March 27, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., for ages 1 through 10, at the Family Aquatic Center. The cars will be able to drive by to receive a free Easter basket for each child in their vehicle. There'll be 300 baskets available, and they'll hand those out to first come, first served. Also, the Recreation Department's continuing to make their plans hand those out, and first come, first served. Also, the Recreation Department is continuing to receive registrations for the summer coed, the men's and women's softball coed, and men's and women's leagues through March, and the other men's and women's leagues through March 30 or until sold out. And if you want any information on any of the recreation events, their number is 532-4140. And then in public works projects, the work on State Route 260 and 60 waterline crossing project has been completed. The work will begin in April on the 11th Avenue Waterline Replacement from Owens near the Aquatic Center going north to West MacNeil, and should be completed in around 60 days. We appreciate the citizens' patience as we improve the city, and as we, as Min mentioned, excellent work our public works crew does when we have a snowstorm, and also the police department, because they deal with all the accidents that happen during that time. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody need seconds or anything? Schedule of meetings.
I have a couple things we need to talk about. We've scheduled a special meeting for the council to interview applicants for vacancies on the boards and commissions, or boards and committees and commission. That meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 23, starting at 5:00 p.m. We'll send out this Thursday, Rachel will send out an agenda and applications for the interviews. You'll be doing that next Tuesday. And then, another reminder, we've scheduled a study session for the council to discuss a report from the Sports Facilities Advisory Group on the Event Center. That study session will be held Tuesday, March 30 at 6:00 p.m. So the next three Tuesdays, you'll be here.
Thank you.
They'll all be in the council chambers, yes.
Thank you, City Manager. Appreciate that. All righty, is there any more business that needs to be brought up for the City Council? If not, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you all. Thank you, Connie.